Hello. Good evening. We have a meeting that has already started, I'm running a bit late. But today is the seventeenth of December two thousand and twenty-four. For the next town council public meeting. The agenda, I don't actually know. Uh. But we shall see. Right, here goes.
The second set is the, um. Nine, ninth of December last Monday. Which is the only birthday party in country. Any comments maybe on those? Suppose we accept those, some lots of them, Tracy. On the paper that. Absolutely. Of course. And finally, the eleventh of December, which was last week. Any, uh, any comments about those? I'll propose we accept those then. Stephen second, do you comment later? Okay. So, item four is, uh, any car support items? Would you like to add anything there?
I haven't done the car support, I've been there for a few days. I've been coming in and out, so the only thing I wanted to say is that we don't mind councillors coming to the office, it does they're in our standing orders. That you should come by appointment, but amendment, we don't mind you coming in, but you can get turned away if we basically have other people in. I'm not going to turn councillors away.
Comments or?
Okay, so. Just to add to that, um, Wendy's fully aware of it. I actually phoned in this morning and was made to work with my own members of staff. Um, but if you're there for the office, it was not a problem at all. If you do have to pay visit, to me, thank God. And I'll say we will fill your ten o'clock and make sure you can try and help as anything.
But I'm sure if you put your head in the door and you'll be turned away with a smile if that's appropriate.
No, all will do, what's left for you about this morning?
Yeah, good, thank you. Item five, mayor's announcements, I don't think there's very much for me to say. I will be reading something at a cover concert on Thursday. That's as exciting as it is this week for the mayor. The feels will come up in later items. Um, item six is open forum, first district councils. So we have three in the, three in the house, who would like to say?
Shall I start?
Yes. Please do.
I'll, I'll start planning on the, on the two of minor issues. Uh, I think the big issue in the future will be planning matters. The government has set a target for North Norfolk, nine hundred and forty-three houses per year. Seventy percent more than the effect of installing a local plant is planned. And that's, uh, somewhat more than the originally proposed, that's four eighty-four originally. We're in a position now that the numbers the government is demanding, they're no relation to actual local demand. Have no guarantee that will result in affordable housing required, so there's a clear issue there. If, assuming things don't change, the planning inspector signs off the local plan with the additional sites. That's the Monkey Road, uh, the Clifton Park in Cromer, additional lands in the south of Cromer. One or two other sites and civil moratorium, small, uh, small village, large, large growth villages. Small villages normally. Then if he signs it off, we may get away with the lower number. If for any reason the local plan is not signed off, it's open season for developers to come in and look after any site they want. That means the town won't be allowed, I mean, the, Grand, back of, the Road, and I must throw that to, to the great name. So there, it could be extremely bad news if we have to try and find those other sites, because there isn't any land. You know, they tend to miss the fact, we're constrained by the sea on one side, a very large area of national landscape out there before we aim in. Change of designation doesn't sound as important as it. The broads, nutrient neutrality, where have the houses? We have the best location, so, yeah, just a wa, a warning there. I did have a meeting this morning, I probably had me, and councillor Leith with, uh, our good friends at Richborough. We did nail them down, they weren't anywhere near as polite as apparently they were to you. So I've got a fair few things to discuss about planning and conformity. Don't think we can actually stop that one. Because they're going to put in an application in the new year, had that initially. But I don't want to say too much on detail on that until I've had a meeting with planners. So I want to make sure that what Richborough are telling me and what the planners are hearing from them are the same thing, because often they aren't. So that one is, is still with us. There's going to be other issues which are going to come into bite us, including large scale solar. Government will decide the maximum ahead. I very much agree with the large scale, so, I'm fine with that. Agricultural lands are growing, I've got a far, so I'm a bit biased, but. There is a severe risk that we'll get big power companies coming in and just try and take a lot, a couple of hundred acres. So like the one I was, it was listed, but several thousand acres. So, you know, that's, that's something to worry, I'm sure we've done, probably less likely, an upper option. So that's, that, that's, that's, that's planning. Uh, obviously you're probably saying, well, I don't know, but the other thing, it's important and important. In fact, we come up in charge of it all next year, what's the promise? I successfully argued, or against the new law, both the charges should increase, should be on the coast, as the Tories say. As a result, we have to vote, have to say from Conservative, we're in London Castle. And they've only got ten p an hour in the London City. So that will make it, uh, one nine thirty, the first two hours, through April, at least. Uh, next, next year, up to a maximum of, where are we, six nine fifty to twenty-four hours? So, still, still good value from there for lots of areas. I've just paid the already discussed charges to do. So, the Horn, Hornbeam Road will stop being free, it was only ever going to be free during the hassle of. Uh, but it currently tells us, does that, climate systems, no power up there, so you can't, so that is the only way to go. Not like it, but, uh. It's been in the, in the coast all four weeks ago, it's, it's not a nice way to drive, especially for our older generation. Uh, three R season ticket will rise seventy-five fifty, hasn't been increased for ten plus years, so it's had to go up. Uh, the end twenty-four annual up to two seven five, again, extremely good value, you're going to worth about six p an hour if you really need to consume frequently. So that's much better. Three R is enough for most in town, if you want to use it, use as one, I'd only get one as a councillor member, I would be using one. Because it's so much easier to keep and stick in manual, working in a car, don't need to. So, you know, I think we've, we've saved, as it could have been a flat rate thirty p a car. We, we get that, the reduced charge, the coastal results, right, how much was on the coast, it's always used on the coast. And that might stop them, my colleagues coming.
It's a frequent thing that people say is that parking is free in Broome, but I believe they can start shopping, do you can confirm that, do you know?
I've only read the press reports, I gather it's not gone, I would say, or something. I had three, two, one, but Broome's got financial problems, I don't care, district, do you think?
And the Richborough meeting this morning, um. I wouldn't have bothered to request it from councillors, I know, um, the reception, it is very clear that whilst they sat in this room, saying they were listening, they are not. Um, at no point was any of the concern that was risen, um, during the conversation, was acknowledged. And when we spoke about the secondary entrance to the site, which they believe nobody would reuse anyway. Um, and we did point out that it's the quickest route to second streets, for example, they discounted that completely. Um, so they are not listening, so we need to be a little bit louder as a community. As Paul said, there will be a planning application coming forward. Um, I left the meeting, um, slightly early on because we were in Phoenix building, but because there was no point being there, um, it was very, very frustrating. And in contrast to the meeting that was countering, um, it was very, very different. So it's interesting to see how they remain when they're not in front of the public, so to speak. So that's not set for a very, very good working relationship going forward. So please, can we make sure that we're very kind when it comes to consultation, um, on that, we use trinomly by voice of presidents. Um, I did receive some concern about a structure that goes onto that local car park, um, where there's a crack in the wall, environmental protection. I've been out to look at the site, more contacts in the property, and they don't believe it is any immediate risk at the moment. The planning application, the same as recent, they're open hours, their delivery times. Um, as I have let you know before, that I have called that into committee, um, I remember it because of complaints of noise. Um, that we've had, um, from the in post look, that's their delivery times, but there was a lot of complaints of noise previously. That was due to come in December to the committee there, but they were waiting on some further information from environmental health. So as soon as I get the day for that, I'll, you know, and I'm sure you'll want to make representation there. The paper committee to full council tomorrow, which talks about COVID stations. I did make representation for the town based on the feedback that we got through the market across by election. Which was served by the Remy Catholic Church, which is on the very, very far end of the ward. Westall residents who are on this mobile and don't drive, felt it was too difficult to get there. Um, and aside from postal voting, many members of our community like to go and put the X in the box, it is part of the voter experience. So I did request that that be removed, that hasn't been altered in the paper, so I'll make representation again before council. On that matter, overall, biggest issue we're facing today is homelessness. So we have got members of our community which are in improper housing, um, overcrowding, and are facing quite significant strain to keep home living in the local area, so that's just something for us to be mindful of. Um, I just want to thank Wendy in particular, because you've dealt with quite a few inquiries over the last few months, and we're trying to work together to make sure that people are going in the right direction. Um, but as it stands at the moment, Shelter are offering some fantastic support, letting people get eviction notices. So if we know anybody that is in that situation, Shelter is the fastest and most supportive route to counter the situation that we've got going there at the moment. I have to pass over to Mark for any further updates on district.
Um, you mean on bins? But I did manage to get officers out to have a look at the church, sure, I wouldn't be an issue there. There are some serious issues going on there and some potential fire regulation violations at the back of some of those shops. Um, that's all going to be looked at, it's all been noted, so as soon as it's sunburned up there. Um, again, trying to export who owns the piece of land out back of Kelly's chip shop. And because I believe down there, it's halfway to nowhere. And with a little bit of poor thoughts and careful planning, there could be a bit of storage area there, there could house several of the bins, not all of them, it wouldn't be reasonable for that. But to start trying to break that up a little bit, because it is unpleasant. And the day when I visited with officers, um, there was actually a function on at the church. And a large amount of rubbish all around the entrance that you can see, it's, it's untidy, so at least it's not nice. So working on that, again, with bins, helping businesses and residents to deal with their bin queries, lots of potholes and blocked drains and other such stuff like that, although having a look through the, um, the evolution white paper, these are some interesting, um, interesting reading, I don't think I've really called it deevolution. Um, so other than that, I attended a meeting with Paul and Lucy this morning, and I would double down on developers are not listening, they are rude, and they are determined, they will do what they please. They're not interested in what you have to say, they're not interested in what Paul's got to say, Paul is a very, very experienced individual where planning's concerned. Um, and I would always ask him for his knowledge because of that. And he was shot down repeatedly with, no, you're wrong, no, you're wrong. Whenever facts were asked for, sorry, we don't have the data at hand. Upsetingly, apparently there was only fifty-five of the thousand or so that leave us for cut out for that, only fifty-five responses have come back as feedback. That's a little bit of a poor show on our part, I think we need to try and up that, we need to shout louder, um.
Well, I think, I think my understanding of that was fifty-five responses to their consent.
Yes.
There's been far more, it hands down, to the, uh, uh, rural plan consultation.
The fact that there is only fifty-five though, is still concerning, and we should be doing more, I mean, and really that's folks now, but nevertheless. Letters and emails that are valid and not just emotionally driven, um, would be good to add some weight, so, thank you.
And so that strip of land behind Kelly's, we believe is ours, when he's delving in the archives to confirm, but we believe it is.
Excellent.
And on the bank plate building, Lucy, I have traically come on that, it's been to someone, I've written twice to the owners, but zero response.
Environment is sexual, you're trying to be honest.
You told him about the butcher, uh, yes, yeah. I don't know why, hang on.
I don't know, but it might be, as, as we, as we move forwards to deal with that, because unfortunately above Kelly's, I would have, uh, obviously we know that they're looking for flats, they're up there. That's more bins, having spoken with the company responsible for that, they're of the opinion, people need bins, we're just doing what everyone else is doing, the secret bins out. It's got past an acceptable level as it is, and the alternative at the moment from district is that people who don't have bins have flat bin bags. People are not storing those, they're no flats, it's not going to happen, they're going to end up flying different everywhere. Um, so we need to start thinking, that says that is town council land, I very much like it, if we can work together to try and find a solution to house multiple bins there, we can put some nice covers over them. Try and blend the bin to the secondary a little bit, so it's far better than what we have now.
Okay, and this, would you have any town council news for us?
Um, there's a couple of things, so the team came out to do some repairs in the market place, and they spotted a number of issues. Um, so some of it is street furniture that's been damaged by vehicles, we've got some slight sinking which we expect to tap over time with one of the loading bays where the um, paving stones are a little bit uneven. Um, there's some other bits of waste that have been damaged by large vehicles, which they're looking at. So, that was quite a nice conversation actually, because they don't normally get approached, um, in nice ways, and they were quite surprised. So I got quite a lot of information out of them, which was helpful. Um, one of the concerns that I have is the coinciding of three blocks of work, which is going to have closures at the same time. Now, I know Wendy's wrote to me, um, for a little bit of guidance on, on whether to shout loud about it. But there is, so at the point that we have the Brown School Road burnt, which is going to be a large, a large development in the town. Um, you know, we've been campaigning that collectively for about three years to get that, now it's here, fantastic, however. Um, there's a road closure notice, um, and I feel like it's on the market place. For about a week at the same time, the Brown School Road, uh, works happening, that's friendly water, and then there's going to be one on the Yarman Road, isn't there? Um, for open reach, and also closing for a week because somebody's getting new internet connection. Which leaves three major routes, um, for the town closed for at least one week or at the same time. Now highways, whilst they are the authority, they're clearly not planned to be, because that is one of our big direction routes as well. So Saul is not here, um, but I will give him a poke, um, with God's help, I know that Wendy is.
He did mention on our meeting, didn't he, with, with our main, he said, can we not have the voters going on at the same time?
So my concern is, is the management of that. Um, you know, I have some contacts, I know Miles has some contact from residency, we're going to be frustrated. Especially with the extended times on the table to get to work and things, it's going to be disruptive to people, school days. Um, if I had complete, like, we would have people on site every day, and there would be visible progress every day. Then I would be able to speak from my heart with the teams there, but you know, it doesn't work like that. So we have got the comm team who have been working with us, everyone, I think, got letters, um, to say that the work was going on and the reasons why the work was going on and where it would be affected with a little map. Um, of what the work looked like and the traffic lines and things. I know something went out in the press, we have requested that they come and hire somewhere and do some kind of public engagement. So they can get feedback as the word's pressing, they seem a little bit, um, reluctant to do that currently. So I understand that further down the agenda, you've got peace about having a statement. Um, absolutely, have a statement, fantastic, but what I don't want is for the town council to bear, bring on frustrated residents. Um, and I ask that, you know, at that point, please work with Saul, because it's not for us collectively to, to wear this, it's, it's highways, you were doing the work as well, so we need to work together on that.
I haven't had the equation notices for the other two.
Um, I haven't had them either, I just noticed that there's a yellow sign up. Um, so I'm assuming there's something coming, I have seen it.
I've got it before Christmas break up there, wouldn't it?
I will chase them, um, I know there's the other one just down at the bottom of Brown School Road, because I, I saw it on.
We do share them, the equations on Facebook, not?
Yeah, so it's just a case of, you know, how do we manage that? Um, but I have got the name of the officer, I think he was on the website, maybe wrong, but the person he was meeting with the project, so um, I'll make introduction to you, so Wendy said we've got direct contact there.
I agree, that letter you spoke of has only gone to people in the immediate town centre, the vast majority of the town hasn't seen that.
Um, I don't think it's gone to just people in the town centre, um, because I know it's gone to residents on Yarman Road as well. Um, so if we've got, I'm not going to hope that everybody received the letter on the town council. Now, if we didn't, let me know what the, what the black spots are in that regard, I can ask for the, for the drop of that, but I know Yarman Road residents got it as well. You got it, or station, didn't you?
We've got a copy now, and we will, put that on the website.
Okay, and that would be helpful, um, aside from that, obviously, the deevolution, or non-deevolution. Um, as we look at it, sucking power up from the local area into a unitary deevolution upside down, unfortunately. The white papers brought no clarity, in the white paper it suggests that they wouldn't potentially have elections for authorities that are looking towards deevolution. Um, but obviously we've got county elections coming next year, and the indications that they're going to have. Um, it's, it's very, very mixed, um, and conflicting at the moment. But it's very, very clear that if people can't agree, then the government will do to local areas, and the county council have made their feelings very, very clear, and that they want a hold on for a unitary. Um, and that I don't believe is the standard position for districts, so they'll be on to come on that. Obviously there's more needs, and we haven't had our second yet, either local or, or, so perhaps tomorrow.
One question, I remember. When you're talking to highways, if Yarman Road is closed, one of the main divisions that we've asked to interact with you. Yeah. The Yarman Road, that's where we're at.
I think he said the entrance to Yarman Road.
What, Roadworks? I don't, uh, it is there, I should be most annoyed, of course, but, uh, if, if, if stuff is being diverted around that way. That at school, born and even, you know, start and finish, it can't actually get down to Spencer Avenue.
I understand, so, uh, Emma's looking, not my happy, because unfortunately Emma will respond to issues that have happened there. And as we learned by the recent works on the road, um, I think Mal and I spent some evenings rebuilding the actual barriers and things, because cars were driving on pavements to, because they were frustrating, because they couldn't see where the issues. So, you know, there's going to be joints, um, working together, everyone, sorry.
Yeah, I know, we had, uh, the meeting, and I was talking about putting, um, separate cones out along certain roads to not allow parking, I don't know if it's worth saying you can do that down Spencer Avenue, possibly, so we don't have the snack points up, so we will have to sell that.
The cones in Norfolk. Norfolk, all the sugar fruit and these are leaders.
Oh, you, 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 you know what parents do when they kids alive, they will park anyway.
No, so, so we'll just have to keep that dialogue, so tomorrow I'll make the introduction of the officer to Wendy and the office staff, who will proportionately mostly bear the burden there, I'm sorry. All, I am shorted. We've got the dialogue perfectly linked, easy.
Thank you. Uh, Bob, this is really does make town council aware, because I promote the intention of county members. I did go to the recycling to be visited about ten days ago, I was the only one there. It is since booking system is coming, and the guide is informing me that another bit that's going to be visited is down by over half. And that it's pretty much the same across Norfolk. Um, it just needs to be watched, because this could be the thin end of the wedge. If the festival is going down, the next thing the county says is no longer the viable recycling site.
Okay, Emma, you've got anything you were last?
Uh, I do, um, so I think, I think when I finished your last town council meeting, I didn't have the opportunity to, um, to speak, but I did give a report then. Um, obviously it's not been a month since we've, um, had your last meeting, uh, but I've literally incidents from when the last meeting was up until today, uh, and in total, we've had thirty-six incidents within the town. Uh, to break that down, we've had eight in the Horsham East, ten in the Horsham North, and eighty in the Horsham West. Uh, this is a mixture of crimes, including assaults, criminal damage, harassment and theft. Um, but this will also include safeguarding investigations, which are child protection investigations, domestic abuse investigations and mental health investigations. Um, this is down considerably on last year, I believe in the same period, we had eighty-eight in the same period last year, so that's, was it twenty? Twenty-sixth of November, was your last meeting?
Yep.
To today, so that's down massively, I don't know what the cause is for that.
You've done, you've done a good job.
Venture play, you know. Um, we had our last priority setting meeting on the twenty-fifth of November, and the issues raised in that meeting were taken back to a new district meeting. Uh, where it was decided that as a North Norfolk district, the whole, the entire council, district council, um, land essentially. Uh, that we will concentrate on two priorities, and they will be road safety and retail theft. Uh, they will be in place until the next district meeting, which will be in the new year. And our next priority meeting will be on the twenty-seventh of January, our Phoenix Centre, at half past six. Um, and generally been out and about, we've been at recent Christmas lights, which obviously I've been here a couple of times to see you all. Um, and that will continue, it will be about visible policing up until the Christmas period, of which I am working the entirety. So if anyone has any issues, I'll be in on Christmas Day, Boxing Day, Christmas Eve, and hopefully we won't have another Christmas tree event.
Okay. Um, okay, now, any of the members of the public want to say anything?
One thing I would say, for me, um, obviously with the diversion route, with the, um, you know, the Yarman Road, uh, Thelby Road, et cetera. Um, would it be possible for someone to, obviously, try and have work with the people at Halvergate House about? About cars parked on the road opposite the junction of Thelby Road, especially with the vinyl truck ending. Coming down Spencer Avenue, Thelby Road, onto Yarlem Road. Um, you know, most days, there's about four or five hours parked on the pavement, right opposite the junction, which shouldn't happen anyway, opposite the junction. But what's happening is, especially with all the heavy lorries coming up from the waste disposal place and carberds, et cetera. And circos, um, you know, vehicles, uh, rubbish vehicles, the speed they're coming up there, and if you come down Thelby Road. To come onto Yarlem Road, you've got a hedge there which blocks over you. And you're confronted by vehicles on the wrong side of the road overtaking the parked cars.
And where is it?
I'm having to go to Halve Gate House, and I don't know whether we can feed that back to the code entry maybe there at the same time. That's going to be again another piece of point.
Thank you for that point.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else from?
Um, just, just one, um, just something that was said from the county councillor. I thought next year, the county elections have been paused, is that true?
Um, that's not the current thinking, we've had no confirmation.
So Starmer, Starmer saying that the, that's going to be cancelled next year, that's still up for?
We've had no confirmation that that's going to happen.
Okay.
Um, with the devolution coming, from my perspective, it would be a dreadful waste of money. To have elections, then perhaps the year after, have more elections. It just seems high wasteful, but with the clarity on how far down the track devolution is supposed to be. We've got no timeline at the moment, and my biggest fear is, we have had a number of white papers over many, many years. I'm sure Eric will remember how many white papers we've potentially had, and none of them have come to any action. So we have all the questions and the meetings and all the time, and we don't get any information, unfortunately. But we've had no complete confirmation that that's happening, the word still is that the county elections will be going ahead next year. But as soon as Eric confirms it, he won't allow everybody to know, because that means that government are more committed to devolution.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's move on to section seven, finance, to approve the expenditures since our last meeting.
I've just, there is on here, um. I think, I think just on today, but there's one page and work list. That needs to be approved at another meeting, so I'm not going to pay it, because we will be agreed, we as councillors have only agreed ten hours. This is for another invoice for another ten hours work. So, um, even though it's on there, we won't be paying that, that's all we discussed, yeah.
Sharon, could I just, uh, then in terms of what the vehicle was, the vehicle comes from both, obviously, it's the R stuff.
It's for the Gator, the Gator that was approved at DNA, and then came to the council to be approved.
Any previous, uh, pointy on that? Someone like to propose to fix that, those? Tracy, second, all in favour of that? Next item on that is regarding fire safety on the top floor. Um, Steve has looked at this and rightly raised concerns about fire safety upstairs, the blue fire on the kitchen. And also the secondary means of escape is out the window upstairs, because what you can do is jump. So what we need is the follow-up escape items which fix on the inside, forward during the window, frozen out, calmed down. So we'll probably need to get approval from NDC for fitting ours, but, um. What we're after here is a screen, and we should look into that and come back next time with the costs.
One hundred and three musical, before we moved in, that was raised then, and number was interesting as well, there is no fire escape up there.
Well, there shouldn't be, obviously.
Yeah, yeah, we shouldn't have moved in there until it was dropped.
Um, it's a, it's a legal responsibility.
Well, it is, so as the final goes, they refuse to fit one for some bizarre reason.
They said it wasn't necessary, didn't they?
Yes.
They say it wasn't necessary.
Yeah, they said it wasn't necessary, because, and they refused us to have a microwave in there. Now, it's come back to winter, I do believe we didn't need a microwave, we're heating up for eating foods.
Good, that was indirect, um, response to me actually sending them the hype, and you under the government UK site advising them that, um. If the government says it should be fitted to any corridor or access near a stairwell. Um, they should fit it, and they categorically come back to the town clerk and say, we don't think it's necessary. So, um, part of a chat with the town clerk and the mayor. Um, we thought it best to bring two full councils to investigate the costs. Um, and then advise NDC that if they're not going to fit them, then if we have to. And that way, we're compliant with what we can advise them.
I have to say, George has said that we should, you know, we should have a door open, which is saying, I don't know. Um, also, there's, there's two fire doors, because, um, I have gone back to NDC, because we got locked out. The reason why we got locked out is that the lock wasn't fitted correctly. Yeah, the, on the catch bit that's attached to the door frame had bent, so when the door was shut, it hooked it, and then. When we had the muscle to break the door, yeah, obviously, it's. And somebody had to also, um, yes. So I think the integrity of the door makes it not a fire door at all, so if they say, well, we have to pay for it because we damaged it, then I will just go and, and pay for it, that's it.
So, the proposal is that, um. Thank you, and Tracy, all in favour of that? The third item there, uh, one of, one of the issues with our current arrangement upstairs is that there's no separate office for any confidential meetings or discussions, which. Has caused some problems, as you know. The, the little office on the ground, or outside, um, separate building there, is empty. NDC have suggested they might give us a short-term lease to fully fix some building problems, which. It's a bit of a work or something, but they're hugely expensive.
The tiles have moved, I think they had somebody climb on it and the tiles have moved, so it's a little bit down. There's a wall that goes straight through to Martin's, so we probably have to do something about that. So that would be nice to be unlike, um, this part of the city, where we can go and, I think, we can do our wellbeing checks and things. Because at the moment, there is no access to that, there's a table. Oh, I have to come in here, and I shouldn't, I'm not really allowed to use this, when, when you're for our meetings.
Totally agree with what you're saying, maybe you need somewhere, but at the same time, the government's certainly safe, so handled. Surely, it's then what should be.
Well, that, 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 we would have to hire that office and have it as a separate office.
Yeah, but what the saying is, when you hire someone, it's extremely difficult to look them all up.
Well, yeah, but they're looking at, they're suggesting that we do the work in the local.
In the local.
Ah, oh, right. That was a, that was a different suggestion, obviously, we'll have to call the cheque, but.
Obviously, a proposal costs twenty thousand, but it's a few hundred pounds, so the proposal.
It's just temporary, yes.
Again, I may have raised before we moved in there, about a minister, and I'm spiced through a meeting, I probably didn't need.
Um, third question, and the second line.
Tracy, all in favour of that?
We only want a temporary, because we just know what will happen. I can't, I don't know what will happen in the future.
Um, section eight, correspondence, uh. Do we have a way of making this work? Any clocks decisions?
Um, I think I took it to DNA, but I have paid for a health and safety order down at the, um. Compound today, or compound, um, that has been done today, I'm waiting for his report to come back.
Would you like to add to the paperwork I submitted to this one? Um, under, under class decision on the health and safety. For the, um, level one.
Safety, yeah, safeguarding, so seeing you've done a safeguarding, of course, haven't you?
I can go to the first part of that, I'll make the point. Um, the safety, that was approved under the climate decision.
Yeah, I'm sure. I think it was forty-two pounds, wasn't it?
Great, thank you. Um, item nine was the ongoing portions, we, we have had five applications. The next stage of our process is a pre-interview, which we need to arrange in early January, so that we call the next council. But the policy says the panel should be the chair and deputy of personnel, mayor, and another member of personnel. So that would be Harry, Tracy and myself, maybe Paul, if you're okay.
Depends on the dates.
Well, yes, Paul, I can try and arrange that to, to see.
I think it's a fifth number, I'm not too concerned with that. Uh, it should be a company of five, um, according to paragraph five of the.
And just another point, I've no surprise to be viewed as a clergy, but it's not till Monday anyway.
It's Monday, it's sixteen, it was.
Yeah, so, you know, we're looking at, first week or certainly, yeah. So there needs to be somebody else from personnel, isn't it, so?
Yeah, I'm really answer that, I'm glad.
The only other person who dropped from that person, that's a big thing.
Uh, yes, that's true, yeah, thank you.
So, I've got the impression that first minute should be dealt with by the whole council.
This is a role, not, not the personal committee, so this is. Basically, the committee still exists, it's just not easy to get. So, um, separately, we can, uh, we can file an email to find a suitable date and, uh.
You can email me, then we, I can then email our co-ops. Um, I presume they will be redacted, so you won't. No, I'll, I'll have to work in, work out what it says, I'm on the option for this, I have the internet interviews will be done.
Do we, do we need to have a resolution on that? Probably not, so.
No.
Um, item ten is to receive the minutes of the events working group, which had its first meeting a while back. Need to, uh. Uh, we need to, uh, receive some, what's that, some, uh. More detailed proposals for the various events that are proposed, with costings and people resources needed to do those. Um, but, uh, so that can be done after the next meeting.
Sure, can we just run through the highlight bits on there?
Okay, yeah.
If that's all right, thank you, just make sure.
Yeah, um, so the first one there is accepting the terms of reference, I think we've circulated it?
Yes, should have been, anyone needs to be.
Have you seen that?
They may have been set separately at the time.
That must have been packed there, I went to the.
Did you, did you say you said air, was it yesterday? The terms of reference are just, I mean, I can quickly lead out if you want. So the name of the working party, shall be North Washington Town Council Events and Tourism Working Group, called Working Group, these terms of reference. The main purpose of the working group is to discuss ideas and prepare reports on events and potential, potential event opportunities. To be presented to full council, before we're funding to go ahead. In understanding this relevant work, the group will keep well informed on the local traditions, developments and cover affairs. Ensure there is effective liaison between the council and North Washington's organisations, venues and promoters. Work in partnership with the collaboration with voluntary groups, businesses and residents to develop events and tours and opportunities for the town. Identify opportunities to enhance access to events, to strengthen and diversify our cultural offerings. Support our creative communities and support local businesses. Identify and evaluate feasible options for improved football engagement within the town. Consult with residents and businesses in the town to gain an understanding of their issues and needs. Manage the implementation and management of events. Make it possible for North Norfolk as an attractive place to visit. Facilitate the renewal of town maps and leaflets. The public officer writes overseeing the agenda of minutes, even if delegated to a lead officer. All members will be, will be invited to meetings. The chair and vice chair of the working group will normally be elected at the first meeting of the working group. Confidential matters are not limited to non-working group members or public members of the public. All members of the working group must respect confidential matters. Membership, the working group will be elected to any members of the town council, it may include any interested members of the community. All members of the working group must declare any personal interest that may be perceived as being relevant to any decisions or recommendations made by the working group. This may include membership of an organisation, ownership of interest in manual business or indeed any other matter likely to be relevant to the work undertaken by the working group. Members, minimum of two councillors, maximum five councillors, any number of non-censors. Call three members, including one councillor, public, yes, non-confidential items, or not over to non-working group members and general public. So confidential items are only relevant to councillors. Budget none, meetings monthly, day time to be set as required, agenda after to be sent back with the meeting invitation. In a strong minutes, I'll put by the working group chair, presentation to full council and will be agreed by the working group at their next meeting. Delegate flowers none, all recommendations must be agreed at full council.
Yeah, thank you. Um, any comments, uh, too?
Yeah, the only comment that comes immediately to mind is you've put down in the ETRs that you have a minimum of councillors and a maximum of councillors. And an open-ended number of others.
This was based on another one, so I'm just taking this as a template.
With where, with where we are, if you, if you keep it as parity, so if you can have up to five councillors. I think the same should be said, you can have up to five non-censors. Um, that's only a suggestion, uh, and then bear in mind that the limited space we have to have meetings anyway. So it's, it's, I'll, I'll throw it on the floor.
That's reasonable.
So a minimum of non-censors of two, an amassment of five, yes. Five, um, publicly.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I think it's a sensible idea, we, we run it for a year, we can review it on the annual basis as usual.
There's, there's quite a wide ranging, uh, sort of, uh, areas there, so.
Can we just ask, I don't, we all got emails, what would we like to join?
Yes.
I don't remember it being advertised publicly.
Well, the reason for that is, we wanted to establish the group, and then within the minutes, we discussed how we're going to invite other people, publicize, et cetera. But we just need to establish it with the council.
You already got members of the public on there.
Yes.
And if it wasn't advertised, where did they come from?
That's true, yeah.
But, yeah, we were saying, it should have been publicized.
Absolutely, Anna, it's, yeah, it is going to be made public, we just need to establish it, as, as I'm sure you appreciate, this is the first time I'm doing a group.
No, no, it's fine, I'm, I'm in the background, it's wonderful, that's.
Yeah, so on the items that, uh, Trenton highlighted in here, one of the things was recommendation of going, uh, a stall on, does your Sunday markets do? Tell people what we do, get ideas and see if anyone's interested. Yeah, that kind of thing, yeah, and something at the end of town meeting as well. Um, there was a recommendation that the food and craft market might be rebranded as an artisan market in, in the new year. Which better reflects what it is, because we don't want to get cross swords anymore. Um, February is the tenth anniversary of it, so maybe that's a good time to do it. Um, and it was suggested that there was a, a rebranding scheme to go with that, obviously, it's changing the science and others alike. There was a suggestion of the two. There was a suggestion of the two thousand budget for that, which is something we need to think of.
You can't have a budget on the Working Group, because members in the public can't vote for spending.
No, no, all right. It's asking for a budget of two thousand pounds to be kept on, uh, on rebranding.
We've agreed that all five.
Yeah, it says to be agreed by full council.
Yeah, it's to be agreed by, that's what it says here, it's to be agreed by full council. Well, the expenditure could be done through D and A, but, uh, the suggestion was that it needs a rebranding campaign. So whether we want to discuss that now or put it on D and A to skim through the form, we could do that. And then there was a, a series of four events which will be discussed through the year. One, one being a, a street feast and a sort of picnic, which is, uh, sort of building on what we had previously plus a lot of events which. Do you want to say anything about this, Jasmine? But as I said earlier, we need to do costings and do that for us first.
Absolutely, I mean, what I'm looking for at the moment is approval of the general idea so that we can then specifically spend some time getting costings and, and doing the full, um, proposal. Basically, what we would like is a street feast slash street picnic, street party type event, similar to the street feast, but with a sort of more family-friendly picnic kind of area. We're thinking kind of street entertainer circus, kind of add some, make it more sort of child-friendly, have it as a day event. Um, off the top of my head, there was a mini music festival that we'd like to do, to take the sort of musical element from, uh, the street feast, but make it like a daily thing, perhaps have some buskers in, bring the local talent in, maybe have some sort of headline act, you know, bring people in, do you use the local pubs and facilities and the shops will all be open and, you know, again, bring people into the town. Um, there was going to be, um, hopefully, well, I would love to host a kind of wellbeing festival. I recently went to the Norwich Yoga Festival and I feel like that's just yoga, but if we could bring a wellbeing aspect to it, we've got so much in the town, we could offer, if we could bulk it together and have like a day or a weekend. Uh, yeah, because I mean, we could have, obviously, if you're like, I'm a yoga teacher, so I love yoga, but yoga parties, dancing, singing, the choirs, um, we've got the reading, there, there's so much and there's so many teachers here, you know, we could really get people involved. Um, and I also think there's nothing quite like that around here, um, so why can't a portion have, have all these things? And then the last one, just, sorry, very briefly, would, would be a trackside event to celebrate, um, the trackside opening. This would be aimed at kind of, we'll say youths, um, so we would ideally like to have maybe a professional graffiti artist, get some BMXers in there, do some demos, um, and then have a, obviously, non-alcoholic, sort of closed-stick rave in the evening, so that, you know, then I think it could be lots of different age groups, families, young people, old people, you know, and it's a little bit of something for everyone, so what we're looking for is a kind of general yes, so we can spend some time working on the budget, you know, not the budgets, but working on the costings, getting quotes.
Yeah, in the costings to full council.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's like to have food tents for healthy eating and things like that.
Sorry, I don't really recall, well, I think he was on, I'm not sure if he was on the council at the time, but, um, on Thursday market, there was a few years ago, there was a busker session, there was five locations and where buskers, you know, we would do it half hour still and then all rotate, and that went down very well. So that is a good idea.
It was a brilliant busker.
I think that's something that you could do most market, because that went down really well.
It was a brilliant busker, wasn't it? Not, the other, the other week, wasn't it? Oh, the Christmas one, they're called the creepish, yeah, I've been in contact with them.
There was about five areas and someone set up in one of them and then half an hour, forty minutes and they rotated.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's probably something to look at on a general basis as well. Yeah, I think that's, that's an ideal, I'm going to call buskers, isn't it?
We're going to make sure the quality's okay.
Oh, yeah.
Some buskers.
We have fun.
Yeah, yeah, the second thing, have, have you spoken to John about that one? He's wide-ranging contacts in, in the industry.
Well, I, I'm a teacher over there, so we're in contact, um, he's got lots of contacts, he'd be more than happy to, to get involved. Um, again, I just need a, a sort of general, we're interested in hearing about it and then I can spend some time, like I say, put the proposals together.
You're very positive.
Look at in January, don't we, because we're quite hard in January and that, we need to get things booked in, because they all get booked up.
Yeah, because you've got to sort of look at the universe.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, I've been trying to push these things, but we had to wait to get the Working Group started and then obviously things happened, but it's, it's well done. So, absolutely, yeah, but I mean, any enthusiasm, any ideas, yes, etc, very much appreciated.
So, we're generally happy to agree that Jasmine should proceed with that, happy to propose we do. So I'd like to say from the last second, we're always favour that. I think we definitely have got plenty of work to do now.
That's.
So when you join.
Um, item eleven is regarding the, um, developing our actions for giving the recent audit report. We did talk at one point of having a, a working group, but to me it seems sensible to ask finance to do that because they are basically all financial issues, which, um.
I think Eric, well, in the making the other week, it sort of crosses different boundaries, doesn't it, to talk finance? So it might be one of those ideas that we've had before, where you possibly get chairs or committees to be there on it, to look at it from their own perspective, from their own roots.
That's covered, all of it, yeah.
Yeah.
It does cover all.
Yeah.
And it's, when the health and safety order comes in, they might need to be reviewed as well, so I think just some committee together.
It's not just finance.
Well, I'm sure it has to, you know, finance at the core of it, but, you know, as well as you and Paul, you know, if you could still attend it as councillors, so that would sort of give a fairly strong group cover of all topics.
I would welcome that, I mean, I'm quite happy to share it and try and improve, but it's not all about finance.
There's a lot of, a lot of actions to do, you need to make your hands to make sure you get them.
The other thing I was just going to say, if you want finance, you've got a finance meeting scheduled for the seventh of January. With the fortnight Christmas break, it's going to be difficult to get the necessary funding out of, to do the, of the, um. So I think that we could use that to make the difference if people are agreeable, to just have a general, to, 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 with the extra people and do that on the seventh.
Absolutely.
And so I'll just invite, well, Brownie's on that, so it'd just be Paul and yourself to come to the finance meeting.
Do you want Tracy and Paul when it's finance as well?
Oh, yeah, exactly, finance meeting.
All finance, finance, it's the other experts. Would you be?
Um, there's, there's something that came up in the conversation, um, earlier, uh, today actually, is that, um, you know, there's a lot of items mentioned in the report from Leonora. Um, and we've given ourselves a bit of a hard target by mentioning that, uh, the month of May as a target date to see where we are. Now, one of the things I, I've had ping pong balls going around in my head since last week is, um, can we actually break it down and compartmentalise certain aspects that have been downed out that has to do with policy and procedure? Uh, ring fence that, that's to do with finance and all this, all bits that historically go past years, ring fence that into another, another box. Um, and you've said now you're looking for people to get involved, or is, would it be an idea to ask for people to say, right, we've got to look and we've got to see about, um, health and safety, for example, or works, workplace safety, uh, or other, other avenues overall? And see if we can get maybe a group of three over here dealing with that box while Eric and team, team one is dealing with that, that box.
I think it's, I think it, it's bigger than just the crafting, I mean, I think councillors need to start looking at things and, and taking an active role and helping, you know, they could say, oh, I know somebody who's wages expert, I mean, I know wages, I've done wages for years, years, years. But it's got to be, you know, pensions, I just need to be reviewed and I don't know how far that goes back, so we might have to have somebody who's a specialist in that, because that's quite a big job.
I think your request would be starting group meeting, didn't that?
Well, I was looking at that, I was grouping it. Um, I'll give it some more thought over the two-week break over Christmas.
Right.
Um, Bob's already done jobs, sets about processes grouping. As I said at the meeting, we covered it last week, it's not rocket science, sort of, but, um, some of it is quite straightforward, so, for example, if you're doing the value application, we can send a clear recommendation to the full council, this is how you deal with it. Um, but there's others that I don't see that we're going to get concluded by May for a variety of reasons. But it's the reason why you bulk it, you shouldn't be on the way.
Yeah, which is what I said, I don't think you lost weight, but you had all that training. As long as we've got in a statement that the training has been booked, then that's what everyone hear.
Because I think as long as you, if it transfers with the public, um, you know, we always put statements out of what we know and where we are with it.
What we said was that, you know, John got there in progress and actions will be in the agenda by each month, so it's down to the public to see.
Yeah, on agenda.
But I mean, there's also quite a bit of stuff, I mean, I don't know if you have read, but I mean, there's a recommendation, do we subcontract payroll? Do we subcontract?
It was when I made that, it was my suggestion.
Uh, I mean, I don't, it should be one way or the other.
I think in the office.
But they need, but they need things approved.
I think in the office, we would like it to be so safe, I'm so pleased on it.
I'd like to, I'd much want to attend that meeting on the seventh and become part of the, the party that, that made that. Then move forward, get more involvement in more things to be done by now.
Yeah, yeah, historically, under my request, the payroll was subcontracted out. I don't know how it come back in-house, I have not got to, it was always subcontracted out.
Okay, so, man.
It did make sense.
There might be, there might be a problem meeting on the seventh, but that first one.
I'll just focus on places you got there, because you did give a separate company to look at it, the Shane.
Yeah.
I think actually I hate not doing, not confronting it, I can do, yeah.
I can do, for a time, sorry, sorry, Paul, for a time, I believe, and I'll, I'll say subcontracted out, it was another council doing it. Crumb used to do it for us, so we weren't involved in payroll at all.
No, I think we could.
Yeah, I understand, but that's how we had to do, then it got subcontracted from there to some years. Yeah, just, just going, going through, through the document, just developing. Is this going to be, setting as a public document on the website, so the public can see the progress we're making?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's a bit like, for me, it's a bit like following up a, a school lost list, you know, it's not much experience.
It won't be included in the agenda, but it will be a standard, we might get H four, it might, I mean, it's not going to be H four.
But there was nothing saying we gave to the public at, at the meeting, that was fair. Yeah, because obviously, there's a lot of interesting, seeing that we put our house in order, so we need to.
I did, I did watch the video.
That's why you tried it. Okay, so, so lots to do on the seventh, and as I say, that might need to be, uh, longer than normal meeting because getting everything talking through a bit, some grouping and allocating tasks is going to take quite a while, I think.
Can we go forward, can we have it earlier then, six thirty? Right, at six. We start at six.
At daytime?
Yeah.
You can't do daytime except for Friday, I guess.
Fridays. Seven Tuesday.
It's a bit, it's a seven Tuesday.
So if you find it the tenth, you want a Friday.
Let's move it to the tenth. One, it looks, I'll finish this.
I know, but perhaps we'll do it evening, so if you can't do days, you need to.
Well, shall we leave it for the Tuesday then, the start at six?
Start at six, yeah.
I don't think that's.
Well, good. Um, item twelve was a, a statement to use to do with the ongoing roadworks, and the reason being that the office staff are getting lots of calls from the public about the roadworks, which obviously nothing to do with us, but we need to, uh.
Just a standard statement, and I just thought councillors could use it as well, so we're all saying the same thing for the same, it would be. Can we just ask for that as well, I can never remember the name of the road. If you're coming with coal lanes towards the South Asian Army, the road to the right, is that?
Monty.
Monty, thank you. I know before you asked Emma if that could be placed, it's all a while, because everybody's going to come down the line. She done that twenty road and that's going to be a lot there.
Oh, it is?
Yeah. I had to bang up the switches today.
So I think basically, uh, our, our point of view is that we welcome the improvements to the road network, which we normally knew, but we're, we're, we're very concerned that the, um, duration of the works and we'll do our best to contribute to the property as well.
Even press or things, I mean.
Yeah, there's going to be a lot of ambiguity.
No pay, no gain, do you know?
Uh, we welcome the improvement to the road network, and I'm concerned about the duration and impact of traffic diversions. Monitor and, the age, constantly highways.
So. Then keep updating them, yeah, keep, so they have the, um.
But we know, we know from previous works, they're, they're not very, uh.
Yeah, they're not perfect.
They're not. I did, I did think that I would quite often walk down there and just see if people were sitting around and just, yeah.
Not be the best update, you do, you just see what's going on.
I just, I just, I did think that's what I would be doing.
Update, yeah, we know, and just say, nothing's happened today, or this is.
Yeah, and ask what my next steps are.
Well, their office is in Colver's yard, so it's very easy to get to.
Yeah. I mean, remind myself.
Can you find out what the government's been doing in terms of publicising, whether they are on program, behind the program, et cetera?
Sorry?
Can we find, can we get some information out of the regular basis?
Yeah, that's what I'm going to do.
Formerly, are they on program? Because twenty-four weeks in.
I can't even believe they're actually going to be there, probably at that time. I might have got another job going on the other side.
But in my younger working days, I used to do that kind of work and, you know, half that time, people I'd get that.
Look, it's so fair of me, don't tell me.
Yeah, but yes, we, we did. When, perhaps we could formally ask them for a copy of their program.
Yes.
And we still haven't seen the diversion route plan, so we're going to say, well, that's where you go on that way, and if you have went there, you get the funds out there for six months and we do about two days' work.
I think I might have to, as you know.
Right, um, item thirteen, any items for next agenda and, uh, much discussion?
Uh, I'm not sure I'll be at the next meeting, but, uh, things worth us having a discussion at some point. I need a little bit of review possibly, so I might have a couple of meetings ahead. But I do wonder whether we should be live streaming our meetings. All district meetings are live streamed, anybody can watch one of our committee meetings.
I did ask.
The public can see what we're doing, and say it was an interesting job, but, uh.
I think we should, I did say the last thing, and I haven't brought it again because I didn't get any more information, but about getting one of those owls. I bought the cost because I know district users, don't I, don't they?
Yeah, so don't rotate.
Potato camera, but all you have to say is your name, so councillor thing, and then, before you speak, and then that would just be, if hybrid meetings come in, then that's what we're going to have to do anyway.
Indeed. We use, we use owls if we're in a small meeting room. But, uh, in my, my council chambers, three big ca, three cameras, squeaky little things just sitting on the, on the desks. So from, and the, wherever made it. I did, it was looked at before, because now, yeah, and we don't really change it, because at that time, district didn't do either.
We've got, we've got a tap, but we could do all the tap.
So could you do some more testing, go to that, I think, we can bring that to the next council. Okay, thanks for that, Paul. Okay, thanks for that, Paul. Item fourteen, next meeting, 7th of January, we'll discuss that one.
Oh, can I just say something, do you think we should think about our neighbourhood plan again?
We should.
I think we should with all this, as we might not get through in time, but I think we should think about it.
We won't, I'm not sure what position is reached at the level to come, because it can add, it's come before committee, I said.
We're just going to get work combined again, won't we?
Given the speed of issues arriving, I think we probably, but but it's still worth doing, because you can strain off what happened with town centre area itself.
Yeah, I mean, Mel did start a working group and I'm not sure who was on it.
I have gone through the papers of neighbourhood plan before, where I was, it was writing, it says, I saw one to your interview, and I've got one next.
Okay, that ends the public meeting. Thank you for attending.
Oh, does that open without pushing it? Yeah, it's a bit heavy though, isn't it? Is it now, am I just a wuss?